Call this meeting back to order and need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
I move.
Have a motion that we return to open session from closed session. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Rex, will you lead us in the pledge and invocation, please?
Let's pray. Dear God, give us the strength and the decision-making capabilities to make good decisions tonight. And please pray and help us pray for the family of the fallen officers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you all for being out. We've got a pretty good crowd. Several things to take care of on our agenda for tonight. I need to get a motion for approval of our agenda. Anything that needs to be changed or added or addressed? Do I have a motion for the approval of our agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda. This doesn't count consent agendas.
Okay.
Just make a motion we accept the agenda.
Have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. Now I need approval, I mean a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull out the, any of them, I guess it would be all of them, has anything to do with finance.
So you want to pull out Section B, maybe?
Yes, pull out. Yes, that would be my motion. Accept the consent agenda. Just pull out Section B.
Can I have a motion to approve Sections A, C, and D is just information only on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
A second.
Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
I vote yes.
I vote yes. All right. Mr. Hill, you have some questions about B?
Nick, if you'd just give us a summary.
Sure. The first item in the consent agenda that's been pulled out for a budget adjustment is in relation to the HIDA grant. HIDA stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking, and it's a grant that the Sheriff's Office has been awarded. And there is a budget amendment in the amount of, hold on, I'm trying to... There's a $9,000 increase to the compensation, $689 to the FICA associated with that. The second item is a public hearing request advertised for a public hearing at the March Meeting for a budget adjustment related to budget appropriation for the Comprehensive I believe the public hearing was for an amount in excess of 1.5. It's probably not going to be that much, but we have to advertise up to an amount. We can go in an amount lower. I anticipate it to be lower. The right-of-way easement was taken off the agenda, from my understanding. The next is, the next item is the Treasurer's Office vacancy that was removed and put into a contingency last month. We've had a request that that money be placed back into the Treasurer's Office budget. So that's in the amount of...
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand. The next item is a jail appropriation. It is for the excess per diems that we're going to need to get us through the end of the fiscal year, through 6/30, in the amount of $315,000. Basically, what we have done is we have gone through the budget and found, basically used any contingency that we have for any unexpected, anticipated, unanticipated expenditure that may come up between now and June. There was also, and that was basically the first three items, $22,000, reducing other contingency, a $7,500 reduction to the personnel contingency, and removing the capital project reserve of $20,000. There is also a savings from refinancing the complex debt that we talked about last month. That was a $66,000 reduction in our expenditure through the end of the fiscal year. And we had some other items that we have requested from departments on if they had any operational savings that they could anticipate. So we had basically about $8,500, basically $1,500 from animal control. There was $7,000 savings at the cannery, and an $11,000 reduction to the recreation sports equipment. We've reduced the economic development projects for potential incentives for any businesses of $140,000. And IT machinery and equipment was also reduced for capital purchases in the amount of $40,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. I guess we need a motion to approve the Section B?
Make a motion to approve Section B.
A second.
Any other discussion?
Yes. The $315,000, that's going to regional jail, right?
Yes, sir.
Three budgets ago, three budget years ago, the expense was, that we hadn't budgeted for was $400,000.
For the jail?
The regional jail, wasn't it?
Four years?
No, three budget years ago.
It's gone up about $200,000 every year for the past three years. I'm anticipating that number will eventually plateau because we will reach capacity in terms of resources, not in terms of financial resources, but in terms of manpower hours. You can only move so many people through the market. So I'm predicting that that number will plateau at some point.
But, point being, we had, you had the current budget year, then you had last budget year, and one before that. And the regional jail increase was an unbudgeted item three budget years ago. And then last year, we had another unbudgeted increase in the cost. And here we have $315,000. For one these days, we're going to be into real money. And the, but the bottom line is that we need to start budgeting for, budgeting for potential there because if you want me in the airplane when it lands, make sure I'm in there when it takes off, okay? And I just, I think the expenses that we've looked at for three years unbudgeted, and then we get hit with it in February or whenever, that we need to have that possibility shown in at the beginning. And, I mean, three-year history, and I realize it's hard to project something you don't know, but based on last three years, it's getting more concrete in estimations.
Yeah, but three years prior to that, it actually went down for three years. So your point is correct. You don't want to just blindly say that it's going to be nothing if after we've talked to people that know what's going on out there in the world. Looks like it's going to continue to go up. But at some point, as Nick pointed out, physically it can't go up anymore. And at some point, you would hope that whatever these factors are that are causing it to go up in our communities, that those would even out. So I'm not saying let's keep it at zero. Your point is...
Maybe do a six-year average.
Well, a six-year average, you would come out to something like zero. And that's actually my point.
What does that make the total as this budget?
It's about, it's 2.1. And that's what I have in the budget document for next year. But I can't guarantee at this time next year, we won't be discussing another $200,000 increase if I'm picking it up to 2.3 million. So, right now, I have budgeted in additional money for next year during the budget process.
And you feel like this is going to cover us till the end of the year?
Based on a linear analysis, it looks like it probably is. How many full moons are there going to be?
Exactly right.
There's not that many. People left out of jail in Carroll County. I mean, each a limit.
Fortunately, I always have one full moon each month.
Any other discussion on any of this?
Question.
Mr. Webb, your vote on this, please?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And thank you for your comments. Bob, I know there was a concern, and it is a huge concern.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's another concern going to come up during this meeting for like a million, 100,000. It's in, it's down the same road and so forth. And I've got the same concerns there. All right, excuse me.
It's okay. Next, we have, on the agenda is Beth Dixon with Twin County Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Dixon?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be with you. I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself as the new Director of the Twin County Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to begin by thanking you for your past support for the Twin County Chamber, and hope that as we redefine ourselves and head in a new direction, that we can continue to count on that support. I'd like to thank also the members of the Board who are with me this evening. There are some representatives, one representative from Carroll County, Franklin Jett, but also our Treasurer, Michael Stevens, is here, and our incoming President, Anthony Edwards. And those names, I'm sure, are familiar to all of you. They have been hard at work for the past year, a year of reorganization. And we have reconciled our budget, created a new one. They have developed a strategic plan and undergone a new rebranding of the Chamber. And I do have a copy of what the new Chamber logo will look like. And it does point out with the tagline together, "To prosper." And that is something that we're going to be taking seriously and literally. I don't know if you can see it from here, but I'll certainly be happy to email it so that you will have a copy of it going forward. Since they have completed their year of reorganization, we are now approaching a year of rebuilding. And that is going to be my primary role as the new Chamber Director. I hope to bring with me the experience that I have had, not only in Chamber directing, but also event planning. I was the Chamber of Commerce Director in Ash County, North Carolina, for several years, following a tenure of event planning and coordinating concerts at Dollywood. I was in theater management at Dollywood for five years and coordinated major events such as the International Music Festival, the Harvest Celebration, and the Gospel Jubilee. With that also comes some experience in fundraising. So as we approach funding for the Chamber, as you approach funding for projects that you hope to incur, please know that the Chamber will be with you in support. Any letter of support, any physical support that we can provide in terms of human resource, we certainly will be happy to do so. What I will bring to the Chamber, however, is accountability and transparency. It is important to me that we be transparent in all of our actions, and that we keep the open line of communication so that not only those who are representative of government entities and Chamber members, but also the public at large, so that they know what their Chamber activities are doing and where their dollars are being spent. The Board and I are stewards of these finances, and we are stewards of the challenges and the successes that our counties represent. And that is fundamentally important to me as a Director. Also accountability. So we will be sharing with you on a regular basis the progress that the Chamber will be making as it goes forward. We hope to represent, be represented at some of your meetings, and if not, we will certainly be represented in reports so that you will have an ongoing knowledge of what is truly going on at the Chamber. So as we rebuild this year, we will look going to 2018 and 2019 into a year of total renewal. We have a blank canvas, and that blank canvas truly is a blessing. We have been given the opportunity to start anew, and that's what the new Board, and they are energized, and I am very, very grateful, to have the experience, the knowledge, and the presence of the people we have on the Board. There are 21 members of the Board, seven from Carroll County, seven from Grayson County, and seven from Galax. And that balance will be maintained throughout. But as we go forward, there are going to be three primary focuses that the Chamber will be taking. I call them the big three Cs. It's a three-legged stool, if you can envision a three-legged stool. And this Chamber will represent, of course, commerce, because that's what Chambers do. We will promote business and industry in the region. We will advocate for business and industry and education in partnership with appropriate agencies and services. We will support Chamber members through our marketing efforts and discount services, such as member-to-member discounts, networking, educational and training opportunities, some of which are already underway. A young professional networking group is already in the works. And we will support the Chambers in other ways as well, through special, what we call, this is a new marketing term, a tribe, where we will take sections of our Chamber membership, have them develop their own little cultural entities and marketing, so that we will be able to provide resources from them that will be more effectively used in promoting their businesses. The second leg of that stool is culture. And culture is vitally important. I have been to Carroll County, this is my second visit. I spent time with the town manager at Hillsville last week. I've been to the farmer's market, the visitor's center, the museum, and I have stopped to visit with some Chamber members and non-members in the community of Hillsville. This culture is unique. I am not from here, but I have been coming here, as I said to folks, I wasn't even tall when I first started coming here. I was long. I made my first trip to Galax and to Carroll and Grayson Counties when I was three weeks old. I have family who have been from Fancy Gap to Freeze. And we have nestled ourselves in the Blue Ridge Mountains in both these states. My paternal grandmother is from the Commonwealth of Virginia, Taylor Valley, to be specific, outside of Damascus. So our roots run deep here, as far as my family is concerned, and my heritage. It's a culture, not only that I understand, but it's a culture that I also appreciate and respect. That is a pivotal part of the economy of this region, because tourism is so important to this region. And what we want to do is to drive traffic in the direction and bring the right type of visitor to this community. We want the cultural visitor who respects what we respect, who wants to cherish what we cherish and value what is in our backyards. So we will be exploring grant opportunities for natural resource and heritage development, and we will support other events to showcase our heritage and our culture, and again, support the travel and tourism efforts, especially with your visitor's center and the visitor's center in Galax and Grayson, to create an atmosphere which welcomes the cultural visitor, whether they be from within domestic United States or the ever-increasing European visitor who's coming into this region, especially when it comes to the Blue Ridge Parkway visit. And the third leg of the stool is perhaps the most important, and that is community. We have, I have met with the Crossroads people. I have met with Workforce Unlimited. We want to support workforce development through Crossroads, through, with Community College, with the Community College and other private and public sector partners. We'll continue our leadership program. We have a presence there as a sponsor, and we will continue to do that as a primary source of economic development and community engagement for businesses and industries and service organizations. One of the goals for this year is to create a youth leadership program. It is high time that we start looking to the future and building upon the sustainability of what we cherish today. So it is time to start building the leaders of tomorrow. So a youth leadership program is also in the works. And we will work with education and community agencies in enhancing learning and quality of life for all the people who not only visit here, but especially those who work and reside here. Community is the single most important part of this stool. And you put the other two with it, and that's what creates community. We are proud people. We are people who love where we are. You are public servants to these people. And I'm reminded of something that Dr. Margaret Mead said. And Margaret Mead went from Samoa to Shanghai and from New Guinea to New York. And as a result of that, she came out with one fundamental truth. And that fundamental truth is that you never doubt what a small group of thoughtful and committed citizens can do to change their world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. I thank you for your time and for this opportunity to introduce myself. Please know that the phone line is open, that the doors are open, and I look forward to working with you in the coming year. And I welcome any comments or questions.
Seems like you're very energetic with what your plans are, and I'm really excited to see a lot of things, a lot of things that's going to be happening. And I think you've got a pretty good support staff.
I have an excellent support group, and that is, that is important. There's, of all the resources we have, whether they be fiduciary or whether they, whatever they may be, I think the most unrecognized and the most needed is the human resource. So, and we have that in abundance.
Made a very good presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. McCraw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next on the agenda is Mr. Gerald Goad from the Circuit Court. It's always an honor to have you here, because you've always usually got some pretty good news.
Oh, well, thank you.
Things that you've done, and things that you've accomplished.
Well, thank you. I try to bring good news. There's actually good news in court systems.
I actually would like to really commendate you on the plans for the Carter Building. That was impressive.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate what you've done with that.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, that was, for ones that don't know, I found a lot of treasures down in the archive room, and I'll get more into it in a minute. But actually, we found the original blueprints of the Carter Home additions down in the archives room. And so it was in a box full of a lot of other things, including the original blueprints of the jail and the parts of the original architectural drawings of the first courthouse. And so these three things are, you know, in the process of getting preserved. And so we take a project at a time, but it was, it was very, it was a big treasure that I found. So, so thank you. As everybody knows, my name is Gerald Goad, and I welcome all the new supervisors on board, and to each and every one of you, and County Administrator's Office, and the county. It's an honor and privilege of always serving as your clerk. I don't know if you realize, but I'm actually the youngest clerk in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but that's, but I do get picked on a lot.
But you're the hardest working one.
What's that?
You're the hardest working one.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It means a lot. Thank you. But I'm very truly honored and blessed to serve. I want to thank you all, each and every one of you, for your support for constitutional officers, for me and the sheriff, and as well as the other constitutional offices in this building. I feel like it's my due diligence as an elected official and a constitutional officer to inform you of our past year's accomplishments. I know I've talked with the Administrator's Office. We call it the State of the Clerk's Address, so to speak. So I try to do this as a yearly thing. So it's a very short presentation, but there are some things I would like to highlight and some things that we've accomplished in the past year. So. This first, I don't know if you can see this, but this is a chart of our yearly collections from my office to the county. As you can see, the, I don't know if you realize this, but you know, we do process collections, court collections, from juvenile and general district courts. And I just kind of wanted to show with you, you know, you've got your fines and fees. And so I just wanted to show you that, all in total, we've collected $1,499,615.20 from all three courts total in 2017. So that goes, shows you a little bit of kind of what we're doing. But the court side of the building is very busy, as everybody knows. I do want to highlight something on this law library fee. I found last year, or actually, yeah, last year, that in county code, you're supposed to collect $4 for every civil fee, but for some reason, our computers, and for quite some time, only collected $2. And so I didn't find it until last year. And so we adjusted our fee schedule, and so we are now, you know, appropriately collecting the $4 on the civil fee for the law library. So I do want to highlight that for you. But just that kind of gives you a summary, and I like to say I'll be more than happy to provide this presentation for you, is that this is, you know, the money that we collect and that we transfer to the county. So it's quite a big chunk of money. Here's your 2017 caseload statistics. I submitted these to the Compensation Board as required by me. I featured last year's statistics, and I kind of want to show you some increases. In criminal, we had a 16% caseload increase. We did 1,560 criminal cases last year compared to 1,344 last year. In civil, we went down, actually, a little bit. We did 519. In wills, estates initiated, we actually went up to 414. So I'm sure everybody realizes this, but you know, if you look at demographics of Carroll County, you know, we do have an Asian county. And so that affects a lot of the wills and estates and land transfers and those types of things. In judgments, and I don't know if I've gotten anyone to judgments, we've entered, that put on record was 1913. We were down, actually, a little bit, which is, which is, we did. Deeds recorded, we did 3,988 deeds compared to 4,221 last year. Finances statements, these are, in other words, these are called UCC statements. You don't really see that many of them compared to your judgments, but we did 19 of those. Fictitious names, we did 56. Marriage licenses, we did 242. We did 124 divorces. So it's kind of interesting statistic there. I didn't put that in there, but we did do more marriage licenses. Notary qualified, 71. But I want to show you this number right here. We did 1,154 concealed handgun permits last year. And so I want to take this time, and I want to thank J.B. Gardner and the Sheriff's Office for your diligent work on your background checks. This is, you know, I'd say that Carroll County is probably one of the, one of the large, you know, largest numbered counties that really exercised their Second Amendment, which is a good thing. One thing I wanted to highlight, it was kind of an inside, not really joke in the office, but my concealed handgun permit expired this year, and I was the 1,000th application for 2017. So me and my staff, we just kind of made that arrangement. So it was kind of neat that the clerk was the 1,000th number this year. So we issued 667 restitution checks, and we did 335 passports last year. So I want to show you also a highlight for regional numbers. In 2017, Carroll County is the second, Carroll County Circuit Court is the second highest criminal caseload court in the 27th Circuit Court in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is 2017 cases, which I want to highlight, these numbers only feature criminal cases, civil cases, miscellaneous, and concealed handgun permits. It doesn't feature the wills or anything. But if you look here, we did 3,446 total. We're now second highest in the 27. We passed Pulaski, and we passed this year, and we passed Whitfield last year. And the bad news about this is that Whit County, Pulaski, and Montgomery County have more staff in their office than ours. And so it's, you know, it's, it's not unusual to see my truck parked at 6:30, 7 o'clock at night. I'm not trying to get a sympathy thing, but we do the best that we can with the amount of caseload and workload that we are faced with. And so I just kind of want to highlight that. I know I've been working with the County Administrator's Office. They're going to be sending some letters to the Compensation Board. I put in my request, and I'm really letting my legislators know, and I've done the best that I could, but... done the best that I could, but we've just, we were really, really struggling with the amount of caseload that we're having to be responsible for. I wanted to highlight some 2017 accomplishments. The biggest one that I feel, this is one that I was really, really pushing whenever I was running for office, is what's called Officer of the Court Remote Access. This means that attorneys now have digital access to their case files without having even to come to the clerk's office. This is one way to not only provide efficient services, but it's also a way that we can collect revenue for our office. We charge a yearly fee for each attorney, it's $150. For each staff member that's supervised under attorney, it's $50 a year. We tried to be as reasonable as we could, and we compared our prices with other courts in the surrounding areas. But this reduces the workload that me and my staff have to do with the interruptions that they can actually access case files electronically from their computer 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, as long as they have a bar license. But this was something that, of course, is, I highlighted last year, you know, we scan our files now. And so, everything that's scanned in the system, the attorneys now have access remotely. I had a high school intern last year finish what's called an electronic flat index. My part-time, actually, Christopher Stone actually took upon himself, he took a proactive approach, and he actually created an electronic flat index to where you can go in a deed room. And used to, you had to flip through this big massive book, and it really wasn't, you know, I think Ronald can attest to this, you can flip through this book, and you go through the names, and everything was handwritten. And now, everything is put into a digitized index to where you can just search by name, and it will come, pull up your slide number, your pages, and your search process is much more efficient with that now. And so, I felt very honored that, you know, a part-timer took upon himself, on his own time to create that. He didn't have to, and you know, and our high school intern actually finished that project last year. The other, the other project that the intern did is we did a marriage license back scan. Of course, now, you know, we're scanning our marriage licenses now, and now we have all our marriage licenses back scanned to 2006. You know, and so, we're very fortunate for that. Marriage licenses are now featured online with our new RMS system that we have through the Supreme Court that we got implemented back in 2016. One thing too, I don't know, I can't remember, it was somewhere in the, towards the end of 2016, first of 2017, but one big thing I do wanna highlight is that we have fully installed now a courtroom here and assistance system. We're now ADA compliant in the courtroom. And so, this is for jurors, for witnesses, they can actually can, there's a listening assistance system that they can put on that we can provide for them free of charge so that we can be, make sure that we're ADA compliant, you know, with listening assistance. One really exciting thing that we had accomplished last year was general district court appeals. At that time, middle of last year, we were the 17th court in the state to accept general district appeals electronically. And I just signed the agreement with Galax here a couple weeks ago, and so, I really appreciate Donna Ayers willing to work together, and it's just, and what it is, is that they scan down in general district court, and all those images that are on those files get sent completely into our system electronically, and we're not having to rescan all those papers and all those documents. The original papers still come up from lower courts, but everything's already in the system. So, it was a really excited, exciting feature. It saves my staff, as well as I, you know, time of having to rescan those documents. One thing too, that, you know, the Virginia Supreme Court features now is that on the SRA, the Secure Remote Access, and again, if you're unsure of what Secure Remote Access is, this is the online access to deed records. And our records are where people pay a monthly subscription, if you're a government official or if you're in a government office, you know, of course, you'd be exempt from those fees. But this is an, this is an opportunity for, you know, people to access our deeds and land records electronically. There's an unverified search now on the Secure Remote Access. And what that means is that if a deed gets recorded, say if a deed gets recorded right now, then that deed will actually show up online instantaneously, and nobody has to wait on me or my staff to have to index. So, if some, if a realtor or someone's trying to do a quick closing, they can check their unverified and see everything that's coming in instantaneously. And that's for deeds and land records, that's for judgments, that's for wills, that's for everything that's offered on this Secure Remote Access. So, this has really been a beneficial thing to a lot of, a lot of our subscribers. One thing too, I wanted to mention is that I installed an enhanced security camera system. This was purchased on, through state funds, but we now are, we have 12 cameras throughout Circuit Court Clerk's Office and the courtroom lobby for security purposes. And so, I just wanted, that was a big goal of ours last year. One thing too, I wanna highlight, this was a goal of mine, but we didn't, unfortunately, one of my staff members, she had to go for emergency gallbladder surgery, so wasn't able to complete it at the end of the year, but I do wanna highlight is that there's been a flat back scan project, and we only have three flat books left, which is survey books of the three oldest ones. And then, once we put that in RMS, then every land document will be fully digitized and online in Carroll County. And it's a, it's a big accomplishment, you know. I do wanna give Carolyn Honeycutt credit for that. She worked really hard during her 24 years to make sure things were digitized, and so, that took a great deal of time. And so, I wanna say that we, I'm very proud to say that, you know, Carroll County will now have every land document fully digitized online. One thing too, I want to highlight, and I also wanted to thank each and every one of you in the county administrator's office, is for your awards for our capital improvements last year. You know, we have, there were two awards. We're currently going in the process of getting an enhanced security button installation. I think the last ones that we, or the current ones that we have, some of them work, some of them don't, and so, these are buttons that we have, you know, you know, next to judges', you know, bench, and where I sit, it's in behind our cash register drawers, just in case of a crisis or something happens, we're getting those installed. I do wanna say that our archives room downstairs project is currently underway, is going, I wanna thank the maintenance department and county administrator's office, as well as you all for, for your support on that. You know, we're painting the floors and the walls, and you know, our project, our goal is to move all of our historic documents into acidic-free storage boxes so they will protect the documents. One thing I did forget on here is that there's gonna be an HVAC unit installed to help with the climate control and with the humidity problems that's down in the basement. And so, I wanna thank you all very much for this. This really means a lot to me and my office, but most importantly, to the citizens that utilize the archives room. One thing too, that one of the first things that was told to me, and I don't really take it lightly, is that, you know, a clerk recorded, it's my responsibility to record history every day, and you know, it's, we have to protect our history. And I feel like that the documents down in the archive room are just as important, if not more important, than the documents that will come in tomorrow. So, I just wanted to thank you all for your support on that. One thing too, I wanted to highlight is that three of my deputy clerks completed their certifications for career development program. This is something through the Virginia Circuit Court Clerks Association, as well as the Virginia Compensation Board. For deputy clerks, they have to complete 60 hours of course credit. These classes are provided through the Virginia Supreme Court. They are actually funded by the Virginia Supreme Court, doesn't cost the county or locality or my office anything. Their travel reimbursements are completely by the state, and so, it's a really great win-win for clerk's offices, because the classes that they go over are things that makes, makes us enhance our case processing. You know, it's stuff that relates to our everyday, day-to-day operations. I'm proud to say that three of my deputy clerks will receive their certification this year, and they met the requirements, and that's Janice Jessup, she's a criminal deputy clerk. Kate Hazit is, I'm sorry, is a type of, she's over the civil, and then Carla Anderson, the bookkeeper. They have to be at least full-time for three years, and if contingent upon funding with the legislature and the compensation board, these employees will, they are eligible to receive a 9.3% raise. So, and then, one other requirement is that they have to receive an overall extraordinary contributor status on their yearly employment evaluations. So, really proud to say that, you know, three met their requirements last year. I've got two more that are currently in the career development stages, and they should receive their 60 hours this year. There is a career development program for clerks. Mine's a little different. I have to complete, there's six classes through the National Center for State Courts. I've completed five of those, I have one left, and I have to have two clean audits from the APA. And so, mine, mine's gonna take some time, so, but I'm currently working on mine. 2018 goals this year. You know, I really wanna thank Jason Stanley and the county administrator's office, as well as you all, for the new website that's coming. I'm really excited. I want to enhance a lot of our webpages to provide efficient services for citizens that's related to my office. We are still kind of, still working on the office to, for Will's Prove Aid Assistance Center. What's currently going on right now is that citizens are have to come through in back, in our back row, where our rolling files are, and a lot of days, we have elderly, you know, a lot of elderly people, we have a lot of handicapped, that's in wheelchairs. And so, what we're trying to do is have an office space, in which we have, to where it's easily accessible. You know, we're not having to go through the rolling file area, it's more private, it's more in a confidential setting, and so, I'm hoping to get that running this year. One thing too, is that the Virginia Judiciary sent out last year, I wasn't able to get it off the ground last year, but I'm hoping through this year is what's called D-Jobs. This allows defendants to pay their court costs online, as well as allows us to process credit card payments from our computers. What it is right now is you take your credit card, someone's credit card information on the phone, and you write it down, and you have to go all the way to the front and process it. We only have one credit card machine, and so, I'm really hoping that we can get this off the ground so that there's more, better efficiency on, on the office, as well as provides accessibility for defendants to pay their fines. This will be actually installed this, this month. It's called a marriage license kiosk. And what this is, is that the way we currently have it now is citizens are, that wants to apply for a marriage license, they have to fill out a sheet of paper. Well, we find that when they turn in that sheet of paper, they have to, we have to put in all of that information in the system. So, what a marriage license kiosk does is that they actually put in their information themselves. All we have to do is print off the application, they have to proofread it, they sign it, and it's done. And so, it's just, it's just one of those efficiency things that, you know, actually didn't cost our office anything to install. Library of Virginia Grant Awards. And one thing too, before I get into that, I did leave out, I do want to, there's two things I do wanna mention, is, the first thing is that Everett Limeberry, I do wanna thank him. Last year, he sent a member of his staff and all of my, every employee of Circuit Court is now trained on defibrillators. And so, I wanna thank you for, in your department, for that training. I failed to put that in the presentation, but that was a goal. Another thing is that me and the sheriff and Everett went to Bristol, and we participated in active shooter training. As some of you know, that I was a survivor of April 16th. I was a student up there at the time. And so, active shooter training and preparedness is a big thing to me. And I think, you know, and I think, you know, it should be to all of us. And I wanted to thank, thank them for that, and that's something that I think we're continuously working on, and so, that was another goal, you know, another project we started last year. Sorry about that. Library of Virginia Grant Awards. Our last award last year consisted of full preservation of Deed Book Six, which is from years 1857 to 1859, Order Book Three, 1852 to 1858, and Order Book Five, ranged from 1861 to 67. I did wanna highlight since 2016 that we have received a total of $30,013 of grant fund, fund supports document reservation. So, we're very fortunate for that. I do wanna, I don't really like to patronize myself, but I do wanna tell you some, some things that I felt very honored to serve. One thing I did forget on here is that I did serve on the Carroll 175th Birthday Committee. And we did some events. As everybody knows, I became a father last year, so I wasn't able to do quite as many projects as I wanted to, but I do wanna thank Shelby Bucket and the other members of the 175th Birthday Committee for their hard work. I know we had an event at Firstville last year.
Are you laying down a challenge on the baby to the board members here?
I am, yeah. So, just wanted to tell you, yeah. But yes, we did parade, but we did, but I think we had some really good response, especially for the Civil War event back in last fall. And so, we, it was great to celebrate the county. I know it competed in the chili contest, you know, it was, it was very well-received. I wanted to also highlight, you probably, some of you already know, but for the new board members, I wanted to remind you, I also serve on the Galax and Carroll Regional Library Board. If you have any inquiry or any sort of, anything that you'd like to discuss, or if you need anything from regards to the library, I'll be more than happy to help you. I serve on that board. I also serve on the Mount Rogers Community Services Board. I didn't put it in the presentation, but I will go ahead and tell you, just in case if you were wondering, that we don't have a final stage yet, in my understanding, but we do, our, the drug court, Drug Treatment Court is coming. We do have, we're one of very few, or if not, it was really, it was really, you know, specific application, because we've combined Carroll and Grayson County. Most drug courts are just one locality, but we're combining Carroll and Grayson together, and we'll be having that in Galax, in the area. But this is Drug Treatment Court is, it has a lot of partnerships, a lot of people are involved, as well as the Mount Rogers Community Services Board. I really feel like that this is gonna be a very positive thing. I feel like it's gonna help not only the courts, but I think it's gonna help the community. And so, I'm, I'm very excited. I don't really, as a clerk, I don't really have much involvement with this, but I do wanna let you all know that that's coming. I do serve on the Library of Virginia Grants Committee. This is a statewide committee I was appointed to. You're probably wondering, well, you know, if you serve on the committee, then how are you getting grants? Well, they actually allow the members of the committee to actually recuse themselves and still apply for grants. And so, I think that was a very forceful thing. So, whenever Carroll's application's up, I excuse myself from the room. I also wanted to tell you is that I was appointed to the Records Management System Advisory Committee. This is the new land record system that I had installed back in 2016. They're actually doing a rewrite of that software. There's gonna be a launch of that this year, and I was very honored that I was part of that committee to look into ways of making that system more efficient, more user-friendly, and those things. And so, I was very honored for that. I did wanna remind you, you know, is that Carroll is now the second highest caseload in the 27th Circuit. We experienced a 16% workload increase since last year in criminal. According to FTE's Full-Time Equility, there's a, there's a staffing standards formula that the compensation board uses. But our office is actually two employees short per staffing standards, based on our caseload. We are the, I would do wanna remind you that we are the only office in Carroll County that offers passport services. So, if anybody wants to apply for a passport, we are the only office in Carroll County that offers that type of service. And 2017 was the first time in the history of Carroll County that online access to a case file was accomplished. So, that's it. I wanna thank you all, and thank the administrator's office and all county departments for what you do for my office, and again, it's always an honor and a blessing to serve you, to serve as your clerk. You might have any questions?
I have a passport question. Do you renew passports as well as to application?
Yes, we do. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good job you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gerald. I really appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Mr. Bob Martin. For those of you who don't know, he had the opportunity to attend the White House on the Rural Prosperity Conference. I think he's going to give a little bit of...
After that presentation, I feel like I'm following Abraham Lincoln and the Gaiety Berdades. Steve, will you give this to, to the Colonel Hughes at the end of this and Krista, this one? For minutes later? Two Fridays ago, I usually check my internet stuff at least twice a day and it usually runs about 50 to 70 emails. And last, two Fridays ago, I checked it early in the morning, I checked it right after lunch and I didn't check it at night. And Saturday morning, I checked it first thing and one of my emails was from the White House and it said something to the effect, "Dear Mr. Martin, you're invited to the White House to hear a report to the President of the United States from the Task Force on Agriculture and Rural Prosperity." The only thing was you had RSVP'd the day before, so I fired off a couple of quick emails and I got a response back, "Yeah, come on." And so, so I RSVP'd and went up there. That was Saturday morning and the conference was on at 8:15 on Monday morning. And it, I found out at Watton at the White House, it's just not large enough there, they had it across the street in the Eisenhower Building. And there were about 200 people there from 49 states. And the, this report to the President, the Secretary of Agriculture, Sonny Perdue, was the chairman of this. And I found out later that they had presented this, their findings to a group in Tennessee originally. And this was the second presentation. And what, what they had done was the President, Trump, had appointed a committee. And first thing I saw was, he was pretty dead gum serious about it. And I guess he thought there wasn't anybody that looked more like Gomer Pyle than I do, so he invited me to this Rural Prosperity Conference, okay? They had done research and interviews with legislators, stakeholders, state and local tribal governments, federal departments and agency, and compiled a lot of information. And the concern was that, that rural America wasn't benefiting to the point that the metropolitan area was on President Trump's revitalization of, of the growth in, especially prosperity. The people he had on there, he had no fewer than about 50, he had all of the secretaries of all the departments, Treasury, Defense, Attorney General, Interior, Commerce, Labor, Health and Human Services, Transportation, Energy, Education, Environmental Protection Agency, and Federal Communications Commission, Director of Office and Budget. That was one half of the group. The other half included Director of the Office of National Drug Control and Policy, all the way down to the United States Trade Representative and the Director of the National Science Foundation and a ton of other folks. And basically, and he went over the findings of this task force to make rural America benefit in prosperity to the level that a lot of metropolitan areas were. There were a lot of things that I thought hit Carroll County straight ahead. The, excuse me, the, some comments they made, all right? One of the things they really went after was broadband communications. And they estimated that in 2016, that if you had broadband in rural America, it would generate 70,000 jobs, $100 billion worth of commerce in 2015. And as of 2014, only 39% of the rural population had access to broadband. There's a tremendous amount of Carroll County folks that do not have access to good email services. Maybe if you live close to a center or something, it's really good. But I know I've gotten lots of calls from Mitchell's Crossroads, Liberty Hill, and that was just the surface of it. The two things to try to summarize that they, that they were targeting, broadband was one of the top things that they were going after. And the second one was roads. It was felt that roads and broadband services in rural America would open up productivity and commerce in rural America. Overall, the rural population is shrinking for the first time on record and it is not just due to demigration of young adults to the cities. Fewer births, increased mortality, aging workforce, aging population, all of those have contributed to the population decline in rural America. And the, one of the things that was pointed out, the, why is that important? And how many thinks, how many think that most of the crops and food in the United States is grown in New York City? Nobody. And the truth is, the majority of food products and agriculture products are grown in rural areas. And the rural, rural employment has grown slower than in urban areas. 60% growth in rural areas, what do you think it is in metropolitan? It increased by 120%. That was employment. The, it is estimated that by 2050, which, that is a long dang time, right? 2050? 32 growing seasons is all. They point that out. In other words, the population of the United States will be 400 million by the year 2050. And for the same token, to feed a hungry world, the United States will have to make more output from traditional American farmlands. And it, it means technological innovations to improve crop quality, nutritional value, and food safety. Who knows what the number one agricultural nation is in the world? Who do you think?
USA.
The United States, yeah. We grow more, we ship more than anybody else. And if we're going to feed the world, we're going to have to have more technological expertise and we're going to have to put, do more research to make yields grow up, more blight resistant, and on and on. The, one, a couple of other points that were brought out is that in 2015, American farmers and ranchers relied upon exports from 19% of farm income. 2015, 19% of the farm income was agriculture and they relied on exports. In 2016, their exports totaled 139 billion, making the United States the world's top agriculture exporter. The, not too much coal mining and, and those type of things are going on in New York City. Another thing, there's not too many military installations in these metropolitan areas. Now, you get the Pentagon in Washington DC, but there are six military installations in the state of Virginia. And I found it interesting, they, on the news the other night, they, they were giving somebody down the river because they'd identified military installations. But thanks to the United States government, we've identified them on a map provided in this study, okay? And that's great, I suppose. Military installations and contract spending of the Department of Defense drives the economy in many rural localities. According to the Department of Defense, almost half of all their service contracts occur in rural areas to the tune of $5.4 billion. I guess Radford Arsenal would somewhat come under that, although it's not necessarily a military. One thing I found interesting was that you have 3,500 National Guard and Reserve Centers. All of those are in rural areas primary, primarily and are set up to the state, the states that are involved. 42% of the active duty enlisted personnel in the military came from non-urban areas. 42% of the enlisted personnel. The, and I summarize that they list their goals from this and one of them is increase agricultural forestry and food production, especially in 32 years if we're going to increase to 400 million people. And the other two things that went at Carroll County directly was developing a better highway system and improving. And also, the broadband, the e-communications in, in rural areas. The question I asked, because they took questions, I asked how they were going to achieve the broadband everywhere. And what was stated back to me was, number one, it will not be easy. Number two, it will not be cheap. Number three, it is not one thing. It is not going to be all satellites. It's not going to be jets flying across that have Wi-Fi capabilities broadcasting down. And it will not be all poles and underground. It will probably be a hodgepodge of everything to get broadband. And it probably compares to the rural electrification federal government program that occurred years ago to get electricity in places like Carroll County and elsewhere, things that we now take for granted. I saw how important this was and it wasn't something to just casually pass off. President Trump has got some high-powered people working on this and has got a special task force to work on broadband. At, about the time I, I was up in Washington and it was an honor to be there, but I'll also point out that Steve, you and Dr. Littrell were in Richmond what, this past, yeah, this past Thursday, right? Correct? About the closure of Southwest Virginia Training Center. I think it's important that we take advantage of all of these things. The, it gets our name in front of them and it's important that we ring the cowbell for Carroll County. And it was, it's a good meeting. They, it was informational. I can pass this down, but, and President, or Vice President Pence came in at the end of the meeting and the interesting thing he said was, he wanted to know how Rex Hill was doing in Carroll County. And I, I spent time with him explaining that. Pass that down. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but it, you got the 10-minute explanation. It was three hours and something sitting and, and, but it, somebody took a really serious approach and I, my impression was that President Trump was very serious about it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for taking the time and attending that. Next on the agenda is committee appointments. I think we have two that staff has placed in there.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, just nominate Mava Vass and Dr. Littrell to those two prospective vacancies.
Are you in acceptance of that?
Uh, yeah, I would say though, that we need an alternate also for the District Three. We don't have one right now.
We'll publicize that as well.
Can, can we publicize to get an alternate? See if we can get, or does it have to be a board member for the district?
They recommend a board member.
They recommend a board member. Do we have any volunteers for that?
I have served...
You'll do it? Okay.
Somewhat I have missed one, but I don't have any backup if I do miss one.
All right, so we have a motion to place Mava Vass on the Mount Rogers Community Service Board and to place Dr. Littrell back on the District Three Board and put Steve Truitt on as an alternate for that.
I would be glad to do an alternate with Steve. I've, I've served in every office capacity on District Three, from Secretary Treasurer to Chief Officer.
Do we need to do, do two alternates or Steve would, did you rather Bob do the alternate?
No, I'm, I'm not going to fight you for it. I'm just saying that sometimes he can't, might not, could do it and I'd be glad to.
Only, only one goes.
Only one can do it.
Well, that's great.
So, you just need two people.
Alternate, alternate. If you can't go and he can't go, he can call you.
All right, that'd be great.
So, I have that motion. Do I have a second from anyone?
That's us.
Do I have a second?
I'll second him.
I have a second from Mr. McCraw already. Mr. Webb, can we have your vote, please?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
I was telling him.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics that we kind of held over from our organizational meeting. We have passed, they've been passed out two separate ones. One, it was an existing and then we have had an updated one. Do I have anybody's opinion or motion?
I'd like to move that we continue with the one that we have. I think both of them are good documents, but I prefer the original one.
Okay. I have a motion for Dr. Littrell to accept the, the existing Code of Ethics. Do I have any other, do I have a second on that? Do I have any?
Could I move that we table it to the next meeting?
Well, since we have no second, I guess we can table it to the next meeting. Is that proper?
Yeah.
Okay. Since we have no second, we'll move, we'll... Since we have no second, we'll move, we'll hold that over to the next meeting. Next is citizens' time. Do we have anyone signed up for citizens' time?
What I'm gonna talk about, first of all, I want to compliment all you folks on the job that you do for the community and all that. But there is one concern that I really have, and it's a lack of representation at the federal level. And I want to touch on that. The rural areas of our Ninth District have been neglected for too long. Our main streets are lined with empty stores which serve no purpose. Two hospitals in the Ninth District have closed their doors. Young families are leaving in droves to seek employment elsewhere. Our teachers are underpaid, with many leaving to pursue other careers. Some of our schools have large buckets in classrooms to catch the water from leaking roofs. Our bridges and culverts are deemed to be the worst in Virginia. Broadband is still not available in many rural areas. Our power grid is outdated. Many of our small communities are beginning to look like ghost towns. As the wealth inequality in America continues to worsen, our small rural communities are especially hard-hit, almost forgotten. Large corporations do not locate their operations in rural areas because the available labor pool fails to meet their high-tech requirements. Advanced automation and robotics has greatly reduced the need for real people. Engineers, designers, and programmers are as skilled as needed, which are not usually available in our rural areas. For twenty-nine years, our former Congressman Rick Boucher represented our Ninth District with a focus on growing our rural community. Boucher was responsible for the creation of the Southwest Virginia Farmers Market, now both a thriving wholesale and retail operation. Rick also addressed the need for advanced education with the creation of the Crossroads Institute. He also recognized our mountain music heritage and tourism with the creation of the Blue Ridge Music Center. Many infrastructure improvements throughout the Ninth District were to work with Rick Boucher. Those were the days when we had genuine, real representation and the benefits of Boucher's hard work. Boucher's hard work were very evident then and now. In a recent edition of the Gazette, there is a headline, Carroll Looks at Budget Challenges. Various options to raise revenue were discussed, such as charging for EMS and fire calls. That would be the equivalent of trying to get blood out of a stone, for the folks most affected would be the very ones who could least afford it. To reduce costs, eliminating positions was also discussed, which Bob Martin opposed, rightfully so, as efficiencies are lost by eliminating personnel, as indicated by Nikki Cannon. Do I have to stop? Can I keep going?
Go ahead.
It's important. Nowhere in the entire article did I find mention of the lack of representation in our Ninth District by our current Congressman, Morgan Griffith, who has been all talk and no action for the last seven years. Rick Boucher used to be our lifeline to federal funding, while Griffith is focused only on tax cuts for the rich and reduced spending. Our Ninth District Congressman is our one and only link to federal funding, and Griffith has failed miserably regarding the rural areas of the Ninth District in Carroll County. I detest wasteful, wasteful spending, but I strongly believe progressive investment in our rural areas is of utmost importance. Our two primary industries in Carroll County are agriculture and tourism, both of which are seasonal, six months active and six months dormant. Farmers receive only sixteen cents of every consumer food dollar spent. Farmers that raise beef cattle are hit with high costs for hay and feed during the colder months. Of the top four employers in Carroll County, three are funded by the taxpayers: our school system, our county government, and the Southwest Virginia Training Center, which is shutting down in June, resulting in a loss of four hundred jobs. Our rural areas are especially hard-hit because we lacked the diversified economies of the more populated areas of Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and other such areas. Such areas have lots of good manufacturing jobs, both large and small, Virginia Tech and other colleges, and many thriving retail establishments, to include many health care facilities. They can raise the mill rate a notch or two to make up for the reduced federal funding, and nobody hardly notices. We cannot do that here in our rural communities, hence the dire, the dire need for Ninth District representation at the federal level. It is now do or die. We must begin to decide between party loyalty or the many needs Carroll County and our Ninth District. We must never lose sight of all that Rick Boucher did for Carroll County and the many other rural areas in our Ninth District. Griffith has been our weak link to federal funding, and that is just no longer acceptable. The time for change is now. Morgan Griffith has done absolutely nothing to address the many needs of our district, especially our rural areas. There is no way things are going to improve as long as we lack representation here in our Ninth District. The very fact Griffith hardly ever visits our district is a clear indication he has failed as our Congressman and serves no purpose for our Ninth District. He is supposed to represent all of our Ninth District, to include our rural areas, and has compensated one hundred seventy-four thousand dollars a year to do so. It is now time for a change, and Anthony Flaccovento has the knowledge, experience, and compassion for our rural areas to bring back real representation to our Ninth District. Flaccovento refuses contributions from corporations and PACs. He runs a totally grassroots campaign with a focus on the needs of our rural communities. Griffith relies on huge contributions from large corporations, many of which are not located in our Ninth District or even in Virginia. Our rural areas will continue to be hammered with budget shortfalls as long as we continue with a lack of representation at the federal level. Flaccovento is not your typical politician, never having held public office. He has over thirty years' experience relating to small community revitalization. He helped many former tobacco farmers in the Abington area switch over to growing organic crops. He himself is an organic farmer who is instrumental in the formation of the Abington Farmers Market. He has an economic consulting business and has written a great book, Building a Healthy Economy From the Bottom Up. Griffith has failed to do his job, and that is no longer acceptable. Flaccovento represents hope for our Ninth District, and I urge everyone to support Anthony Flaccovento as our next Ninth District Congressman. Flaccovento, Flaccovento will be at the Senior Center in Woodlong tomorrow at six-thirty. The Senior Center is located on Training Center Road, directly across from the Training Center. I urge you all to join us tomorrow to meet Anthony, who represents hope for Carroll County and our Ninth District rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to, want to mention one thing to you. You mentioned about five-acre farms. The average acreage in Carroll County is a hundred and forty-seven acres for our farms.
I got one acre in my farm. We raise all our...
I just wanted to point that out to you.
Yeah.
Pleased to come back.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Next item is supervisors' time, and we'll start on the forehand with Mr. Webb. What do you think, Mr. Webb?
Yeah, being the new kid on the block, uh, this has all been overwhelming to me, just my second meeting. Got some questions that, that I would like to ask, uh, probably of the staff about things that came up before I sat on the board. Um, I know back in November, the school board was here asking for money for a new roof and for new buses, and if I remember correctly, uh, it was done on good faith. Is that not correct? Um, well, the buses have been ordered, and they've already started on the roof down there, so has there been any plans made to cover those expenses?
No concrete plans have been made. We did investigate getting money from the USBA and other sources.
Right.
Um, the school in the meantime has been looking at inward if there are other options to maybe pre-adjusting some priorities, so there's been no final answer as to whether additional funds will need to be put through or not.
Right, and I just, you know, we're going into budget time, and are those expenses, which were going to be over half a million dollars, are they going to be hitting us about July? Don't know, don't know yet.
Well, no, we don't know for sure. I mean, I, there's a lot of cooperation with the school board that's sitting here as part of the budget process.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, one way, if, if the school board came back with a flat recommendation and somehow those costs got covered, I'd call that a win.
Oh, yeah, if they do that.
So, you know, it, it, it works in mysterious ways. No, it's not completely settled.
Okay, all right, that was, that was a question. Um, another question that I had, um, just listening in the budget, that, that, that the budget is a living, breathing document that has to be adjusted. Um, I had a problem with that in the fact that uh my understanding of a budget was, that's what you got, that's what you get, that's what you got to work on with. Um, I don't, I don't understand, I know Mr. Hill brought up, one of, one of the things that was funded for the, the year seventeen-eighteen, they had used, I don't know, seventy, eighty percent of their money the first six months. So they probably are not going to be able to do the last six months of the fiscal year with the money they had left, and they're going to come back for more. So are we obligated to meet those funds? Or if we, if we budgeted X amount of dollars, and then they come back six, nine months into the year and say, we're out of money, are we obligated as a board to fund those things, or what, where do we stand?
Depending on what it is. Uh, you know, the, the CSA, for example, there are certain activities that are mandated.
Okay.
Certain activities that are paid by the state, and when that happens, we then have to take in a certain amount of money to naturally pay for.
Okay.
Now, the adjustments we talked about today
Mm-hmm.
did not result in any change to the overall, but
Right.
we went and took money from other places and moved it to cover the additional deal expenses.
Right.
So there were no, there was no increase in the overall amount. So the answer is, is it depends.
Okay.
And, and, you know, it's a, a big bone of contention as to how you budget for those things that you only have limited control over, and how much contingency that you put place, put place at the beginning versus searching for it later. And I thought it's one of the things that we're gonna have to work through when we complete this budget process for this year.
Right.
So, but generally, the answer is no. Uh, you know, if it's, if one of my departments comes back and says, uh, I spent eighty percent of my, my stuff in one week, three, I'm gonna have to say, how, how terrible for you, because everybody is out.
Right, but, again, I'm trying to learn, I'm trying to learn how all this works. I mean, it, it's all new to me. And uh, uh, the other, the other comment I'd like to make, I know, uh, last month, there was a big, well, there was, there was discussion on bringing back the county sticker. And just hearing people that I've talked to and reading things, social media and that sort of thing, I think that the public was misled in that it's going to be an additional tax. And, and I would like to see that go out, that we didn't discuss an additional tax. A lot of people are saying, well, we already paid twenty-five dollars on our personal property, now we've got to pay another twenty-five for a sticker. And I think that was totally, it, it wasn't, it wasn't relayed to the public, that, that wasn't what we were talking about, you know? So I would like for it to come out that, no, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a way to police whether you have paid or not, not the fact that we're trying to collect more money from you. So I just, I just wanted to make those kind of comments and, and kind of learn, see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Mr. McCraw?
Thank you, Mr. Webb, for his questions there. They shed a little light on it, and uh that has been a concern of a lot of people down my, areas, the county stickers. I don't like to put them on, I don't like to take them off, I say, and why are they not getting collected for them? So I've had to answer that question, or a time, several times, yeah. Thank y'all for coming out tonight.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I just want to cover a couple of things. Back in two thousand nine, there were certain, I think antique vehicles were exempted from the, from the uh county sticker requirement. And that was kind of a thing that I was looking at. Plus, like you said, the stickers is a badge that you paid your, your uh personal property tax. So, you know, I know people don't like to put them on and off, but at least everybody got to see about it. Another thing, we should uh, we should probably make a uh, maybe a motion, or maybe we should be doing another budget meeting, I think, next February twenty-sixth, maybe?
This one's scheduled for Monday.
This Monday? Okay, well, we'll wait. See, I was looking, I was trying to find the, the thing here, is that just going to be the, the uh, the expenditures?
Yes.
Six, seven?
Six of five.
Six of five. Great talk. I'm glad, yeah. I want to let everybody know, appreciate you coming out tonight. I wished everybody had stayed
Yeah.
to the, to the very end. But I think that's all I've got to say. All I do, is, is think about the families of the fallen police officers. It seems like every meeting we have, we're discussing that, or saying something about it, and it's, it hurts. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr.. Dr. Littrell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Steve and I got to spend a little road time together on the way down to the Lake O legislative day on Thursday, and unfortunately, our timing wasn't as good as it has been in the past, and we didn't get a chance to see some of our legislators in person because they were in the General Assembly. But we did get us, get to speak to their aides, and also did some, some time together with other folks. But I have to say, there was some small encouragement that the Training Center bills have so far progressed, um, through the committees in the appropriations, uh, they so, I can't say that that's going to turn it around, but at least it was more positive than last year when we were there. There are bills that are very similar going through for the Central Virginia Training Center in Lake Spur at the same time, which is scheduled to close in two thousand twenty, so both of the centers at this point still have a little life, life of breathing into them, so we'll just have to wait and see what happens.
Thank you.
But I encourage you to contact your legislators.
I think that's something we all can do, try to do. Mr. Martin?
Um, will we adjourn to Monday? Is it what? Yep. Okay, we'll just adjourn to Monday. And um, I'm very worried about, uh, there's no way in the world that we can continue to absorb three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the regional jail, and what's coming up in March for the uh CSA, what's coming up, how much?
It's gonna be probably over a million dollars.
Over a million dollars? And neither one of those things are budgeted for, and what, one thing I'm concerned on is that some of this stuff is sneaking up on us. I, I think we're ahead of working on our budget concerns right now, because it's earlier than we ever have. But time flies by, and um, I'm, I'm going to make uh two motions, and they both refer to delinquent taxes and getting ready to collect delinquent taxes. Because if we push that thing on down the road, if we don't watch out, we won't have any hopes of collecting delinquent taxes on real estate and personal property at the last minute. And we will be in a real bind. Dr. Littrell's comments a few meetings ago, you zinged me and woke me up. And we have to collect delinquent taxes to make the wheels go. I estimate on Bob Martin math, that delinquent taxes probably add ten percent or more to everybody's tax bill that pays their taxes. You hear what I'm saying? If you pay a thousand bucks, probably ten percent of that, a hundred bucks, is to make sure we got enough money to keep the things going. The best example of that would be back about nineteen hundred and even later, you had cash and carry little grocery stores scattered everywhere. And Bob Martin could go in and pick up ten dollars worth of groceries and put it on my bill. And then Tom Littrell could come in and he could buy eight or ten dollars worth of groceries, and he paid for his. And mine just kept going. I didn't, I just kept charging. And by the end of the year, the store owner, what does he do? To stay in business, I gotta raise, I gotta raise my price. Well, that doesn't bother Bob, because Bob ain't paying for his grocery bill. But here comes Tom in, and all of a sudden, he notices his grocery bill's gone up. And it sorta works that way to the citizens. The people that are paying their taxes, we have to have a certain amount of money. And if somebody doesn't pay, then by hook or crook, the people that are paying their taxes, they have to pick up that cost. Say what you want to, that's how it's going to work. And it may not be so obvious. The following motion, I've had some help with, but I take full responsibility for it. And I believe that we have to have a handle on delinquent taxes and get it going right now. If we postpone it, then that'll be taxes that either go down the tubes or we don't have the money in hand to operate the county. And I'm sorry that I wasn't smart enough to at least pass this out to everybody. I will try to read slowly. Please interrupt my motion all the way through it if you don't understand something, okay? Number one, motion to publish delinquent tax information and authorize collection of delinquent real estate taxes, okay? I move that we instruct staff to take the most up-to-date list of delinquent real estate taxpayers furnished by the Treasurer's Office, originally due to be furnished to the Board of Supervisors in July two thousand seventeen by state law. As of the list that we got, as of today, and publish that list of names owing and amounts due in the local newspaper, as well on the county's website, stating that it is the current, it is current as of the date certified by the Treasurer. Now, it is a snapshot, which means that every other day, somebody's gonna come in and pay money on it and we have to race and change it. It won't change. It's a snapshot. And if you had your picture made with your tongue stuck out, you're out of luck, okay? This will be how it is. That motion to include the publishing in our minutes in February of all the delinquent real estate taxpayers. And according to the most recent numbers provided by the Treasurer's Office, these delinquent taxes total over two point two million dollars. Two point two million dollars, okay? This motion is passed to also instruct staff to include this list in the minutes of this meeting. Thirty days after publication of the delinquent tax information, the Treasurer's Office furnish an updated list to the Board of Supervisors of all remaining uncollected amounts within two days after the passage of the thirtieth day from publication. Publish it in the paper, put it in our minutes, put it on the website, and then there's a deadline. And to receive additional information, the Board of Supervisors will cause this list to be turned over to the collection organization of its choice, okay? The collection organization will then sell for collec-, well, excuse me. The collection organization will then sell for collection of the delinquent taxes, the property eligible for judicial sale under Virginia Code fifty-eight point one dash thirty-nine six five. For those properties not yet eligible for judicial sale, we request that the Treasurer's Office demonstrate appropriate late notices that have been sent and other proper efforts that are being made to collect delinquent taxes on a timely basis. And as a result of these activities, the current disposition of all taxes billed can be made known to the citizens of Carroll County. They are either collected, in the process of being collected by judicial sale, in process of being collected by other means, or not being collected at all. We know we can count on the Treasurer's Office to cooperate fully with the Board of Supervisors, collection agency of choice in the collection of these back taxes, up to and including, if necessary, full inspection of all data maintained by the office regarding taxation of billing and collection as mandated by Virginia Code number fifty-eight dash one dash three one two seven. In other words, we do have the legal authority to look at Treasurer's records to make sure that we've covered everybody, all right? That is my motion. If we push it off till October, if I'm wrong, I don't mean to be, does another two hundred thousand dollars drop off of the list?
There's a considerable amount that will drop off.
In other words, in October, whoo, it's gone. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? And if we postpone this for discussion, or whatever else it is, then it's gonna drag out further and further and further. We are specifically charged with this. Personally, Dr. Littrell, you zinged me because it hit me that my poor old mother who started in October, "Bobby, have you got the tax tickets?" "No, Mom, they're not in. They won't be here till..." Indeed. "Well, soon as they get them, if we get them, you let me know. We're going to Hills. We'll have paid the tax." Well, she didn't have squat. Drew a social security check, but she showed up and she paid her dang taxes. And what she paid, in the best I remember, was about four hundred and some dollars. Again, she had a house and a third of acre, but of that four hundred, she probably was paying like ten percent. She was paying fifty, forty dollars for the people that weren't paying. And that ain't right. And Dr. Littrell, I stand with you on this, that either we go after, we collect the taxes that we're responsible for, or we might as well chuck things in a trash can. That's my motion, and I've got another one to go along with it.
Can I?
Yeah.
I got a couple of things, and I may need some help from Steve on this. I believe-
Steve, I gave you, you got a copy of it, I think.
That we can't publish that list until they've been thirty days notified, is that correct?
We did it, we did a request under Freedom of Information, Counselor, and-
Has to be mailed out.
They have to be mailed notification?
But if we got it under Freedom of Information, and it's a matter of public record, don't, do not, we have right to put it in the minutes of the Board of Supervisors?
Well, it's two different issues.
Yeah, I know, but I got kicked out of law school in freshman year. What do you think, Counselor?
Well, the, I'm looking at fifty-eight point nine thirty-nine twenty-four. The Treasurer may, or shall, in the direction of the governing body, certify to Commissioner Ruffin a copy of a list of real estate on the Commissioner's land book. I'm sorry. The governing body, or the Treasurer may cause the list mentioned in subdivisions two and three, fifty-eight point one dash thirty-nine twenty-one, whether or not they are based on information as exists at the end of the fiscal year. Such parts thereof is deemed to be advised by the Treasurer to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the county, city, or town, or made available on any internet site maintained by the county's legislature.
So, does it require a thirty-day notification?
Or is that thirty-day notification before we can start making, start selling the properties?
There is thirty days, there's notification before you can file a petition for judicial sale.
Just in one thirty-nine sixty-five, as a thirty days, you gotta wait thirty days from when you-
But we can publicize it.
You can publish, and another thirty days you can sell.
Okay, so we have to wait thirty days before we publish? I mean, before we publish, or we can immediately? I'm sorry, I don't mean to be getting confused.
The way I understand it, people don't get here to learn, Counselor, but they can publish right now.
If it's delinquent, it can be published. They have to receive a notice, thirty days notice before you file a petition.
My understanding, Benita's working on those notices and may have even sent some out. But my motion is to-
You need to send a list of everything that was eligible for sale. If it's eligible for sale, if it's done correctly, they've already received a notice. Because that's part of being eligible for sale.
Okay.
If she, what she meant was, these people all need to get a notice and then they're eligible for sale, then okay, we would have to do that. We'll have to check to see what she did.
I know there's some mailings going out. Now, what they are, I don't know.
My feeling is, if we make it part of the minutes, we've given them a notice. I mean, warning, a warning. And then if we publish it in the paper, it's a second warning. And then if she sends out a written notice, that's three warnings. Looks like to me, something bad's coming after three warnings, you know?
But I think the form of one of the warnings is specified in the code.
Right.
And we, and we, when I say we, I mean, all of us, the Bureau of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors, staff, we all need to do that correctly.
Right.
And then we can do all this stuff, just the way it's written down here if we want to.
I mean, I'm all for doing what we need to do to collect these delinquent taxes. I mean, it's went on, and it's went on, and it's went on too long. And we need to collect these taxes. I will tell you that Benita did tell me and Rex both that she would prefer us choosing the attorney firm, so.
Which is, this was in direct response to our request.
Okay.
The notice that would say the collection agency of-
Of our choice, okay.
And I am not casting dispersion on the Treasurer's Office. I just, this is something we have a responsibility to do.
Yes, we do.
And if we don't, frankly, if we won't do this, then you're gonna see a laid-back Bob Martin, 'cause I don't see going after a nickel's worth anything else. I mean, this is a major, major part, and-
I have, I have no issues. As long as it's legal, I have no issues with it. We have a motion by Mr. Martin. Do I have a second from someone?
I'll second.
Continue it up on approval by our attorney.
Our attorney. As long as this, as long as this is legal, I don't have an issue whatsoever. Do I have any other discussion?
I'm totally in favor of the motion. The only question I have is the detail. And I have no idea how many we're talking about, but if we're talking about selling properties, if there's a large number, that could be a glut. I don't, we wanna space it out and kind of-
That's why we're, kind of what we direct him, we could have more than one attorney. So, we could have three or four attorneys selling properties.
Well, I'm not talking about that, but if you have fifty properties coming on sale at the same time, that's gonna dilute your buyers.
Now, they have so much time to pay.
Right, and the way it's usually done is, let's say, two hundred properties are referred. The notices will be sent out usually in batches, targeted at the ones that are gonna be the biggest bang for buck right away. And you will do a, it'll be a group one sale, that there might be fifty properties to start. A lot of delinquent taxpayers will come in and pay during dependency of that. So, you're actually only going to judicial sale, an auction, on maybe fifteen of that delinquent. But you're still collecting that taxes, because people come in and pay. So, that's usually how you handle if there's a glut or a backlog. I mean, I would, I would encourage us to move forward on as many properties as possible.
I mean, I did disagree. I would just hate to see a whole bunch come on at the same time.
Yeah, even if we use multiple firms, which we can, you would want, your point is, I think, balance out the depression effect of having this whole bunch of different market in one's versus-
Exactly.
Yeah, good point.
So, it typically is done in charges, at least the way I see it in other states.
Like I said, it's just a detail that I was interested in.
And this was a question I think Rex brought to my attention. Does the sale of these properties affect appraisal values of properties that sold around them? And when they use them for comp sales and stuff, and those things along that line, will that affect it in any way, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You know, when a sale-
Cause if a reappraisal comes up and-
When it's not a tax sale, like if a property is repossessed, you know, for non-payment or whatever, and it goes for purchase, that doesn't affect it.
Okay, it would be basically the same thing.
I would assume that these don't either.
On our sale support, you'll notice there'll, there's a marker on there that says it's a qualified, if it's a qualified sale, meaning if they get picked out for comp purposes.
One other thing that I would, and I'm asking staff to look at, maybe, on the list that the Treasurer provided to us, there was two lists, a sale list, and then there was a list that had stuff that was not ready for sale. I would like for that list to be gone through and looked at, because there's properties on there that should be, but they're small amounts. And I think that that's the reason that she did not include them, is because they were small amounts. And I think that they should be, I sent them to Steve, and I know I sent them to all of them.
I'm sorry, I should've emailed this out to you, and I will either tonight or in the morning.
So, do we have any other discussion? If not, we'll start, go ahead.
One thing, one thing I wanna bring up, I know we're talking about real estate taxes, but isn't there that much delinquent in personal property also?
Yes, there is, and that's the other thing we need to address, too.
Personal property, this is two point two million.
It's a different way.
How much is personal property?
It's about the same amount.
So, we're looking at two, four, four and a half million or something?
Four and a half billion plus, there's an amount that have dropped off or that are in the county court. Ideally, it should all equal what was built. You need to collect it, everything, but plus plus payable to the county. But that's a different issue.
What is the issue on the personal property, I mean, the personal property?
The issue on personal property is that you're only allowed to publish the name of the person who owes and how much they owe. You can't get in- You can't get into what it is that they own, or any of that other stuff.
Right.
There's no, it's perfectly legal for the person to publish the fact that they do owe it.
Okay.
We, okay, we need to get that, we got Wes.
Mr. Webb, start the voting with you.
Yes, do it.
Mr. McCraw?
I vote yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I have a second motion. If you're gonna jump out of a plane with a, out of parachutes, you might as well yell out two or three things as you're falling, right? A motion to publish delinquent personal property tax information and encourage collection of delinquent personal property taxes. Again, the first one was real estate, this is personal property. I move that we instruct, I move that we instruct staff to take the most up-to-date list of delinquent personal property taxpayers furnished by the treasurer's office as of today, and publish that list of names owing and amounts due in local newspapers, as well as on the county's website, and stating that the list is current as of the date certified by the treasurer, and make that part of the minutes, too, okay? I urge the treasurer's office to use the collection methods available to it to collect these delinquent taxes, which by latest reckoning amount owed, amount to, according, I got 3.6, am I wrong? 3.6?
There is a report that they need to furnish that says 3.6.
That's where, that's where I got my information.
We sat in a meeting and the discussion was, can you really collect these or not?
Okay. Well, 3.6 or 2.2, uh-
But it's a big number.
It's a big number.
You're just talking about personal property.
Personal property, all right?
You know, if you look at the one that goes back, you had one that went back many, many years, that one got 3.6 million, or at one point, you no longer collect.
Well, didn't we discuss that one?
We did, and we, and that was, you can't really talk about what we talked about too much here.
Yeah.
But there was a question at the end of that session as to whether the information about collecting the stuff at the bottom of that day was correct.
Is there limitations on personal property, Steve? Do you know?
There's definitely limitations on both personal and real property.
Okay.
Five years on personal property.
Okay.
And the number's 2.2, it's not 3.6, and so that's another big amount of money that we won't be able to get.
Continuing with my motion. All right. Some methods available to the treasurer's office that have proven effective in other localities include Division of Motor Vehicles stop and debt set-off. That's a lot of fun. DMV stop gives the treasurer the authority to submit a delinquent personal property file to the Department of Motor Vehicles, DMV. Once the file is uploaded to Division of Motor Vehicles, customers will not be able to conduct certain transactions at the DMV. Once all taxes and associated fees associated have been satisfied, the treasurer will release the DMV stop in the treasurer's office. A DMV stop can be placed against an individual, not a vehicle, placed against a individual anytime after the taxes become delinquent. A DMV fee of $50 is added to the tax amount, or debt. DMV requires that tax debts associated with the DMV stop must be paid with certified funds such as cash, money orders, credit card, or certified check, excuse me. Debt set-off allows the treasurer to submit a claim for unpaid taxes and/or other debts owed to the county to the Virginia Department of Taxation. When a delinquent taxpayer files a state income tax return, the Commonwealth of Virginia will notify the treasurer of any refund due to the taxpayer. That refund will be held by the Virginia Department of Taxation until the... I've mis-typed something. Until the Surrey County Treasury. Uh, I'll read it as is, and then you straighten it out, all right? That refund will be held by the Virginia Department of Taxation until the, I've got Surrey, Surrey County, it should be-
No, it's the Virginia.
Yeah, it's not Surrey, I don't know what-
Is this work?
There is a Surrey County.
Okay, well, this is my mistake, type, and I typed this thing. Treasurer is able to claim the portion of the refund needed to satisfy the tax debt and any associated fees. It is time the citizens of Carroll County reapprived the benefit of these and other approved collection methods. Personal property, apparently you can't put it up and auction it off, like Uncle Joe's steel.
Handful of personal property, you can, but it's a different process.
But most of it's handled through Division of Motor Vehicles and the Department of Virginia Taxation, and what happens there is that there are stops put on DMV things and state refund on taxation.
That's most cost-effective, because if you're, if you're levying on handful of personal property and holding a digital tax sale, things like that, it's not as much back to your block, but DMV stops is something that the code Virginia gives you that's highly effective, because if you can't renew your registration, it's a good way to get a payment.
Yes. Steve, if you find errors in this thing, if we're meeting on Monday night, I'd appreciate you bringing it to my attention, and I'd be more than happy to make an amended motion, I guess, or corrected motion.
We always move to rescind or modify action.
Okay, I mean, I don't type so hot, and I don't read law books too well either. That's my motion.
We have a motion in reference to the personal property delinquencies. Do I have a second?
A second?
Have a second, but Mr. McCraw, he had other discussion?
When does the five-year time start? Is it like the December the 5th, the first notice that goes out?
I'd say it's the next year.
I'm thinking-
I think it's when they send out the next billing, then as soon as their notice that they're billing.
I think that's it, too. I think that's right.
Double check it.
I would say it's five years from the end of the tax year, or which it was five, but I'll double check it.
And if that person had made a partial payment, doesn't that reset it?
No, there's an agreement, though.
Yeah.
You can force the agreement.
But if they miss a payment, but if they miss a payment on the agreement, that breaks the agreement, correct?
Right, they're violating their agreement now.
Any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And one final thing, Carroll County participates in the Virginia Association of Counties, and I see that I was appointed, reappointed to the Educational Steering Committee, and some of you folks may have been appointed to something, but-
Health and Human Services Committee.
Yeah, okay. And that's it. The, we're, as Steve Troy said, we're in a predicament in a lot of ways. It didn't happen overnight, and it may take more than a few days to get it straightened out, but we will straighten it out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, appreciate it. I guess I was next to be talking. Got a couple of things to discuss real quick. I know we're running late, but I do have some things. I met with the fire board the other Thursday night, and kind of brought up a discussion about a couple of things, and first of all, can our building official perform an inspection at any time, like a property maintenance inspection? This is, and just to clear up Steve out, in reference to the motel fire that we had. Like if-
Most of the one that went on there was stuff that was appropriately handled at the state level, I mean, we don't really have local-
We don't have like a property maintenance, or, yeah, yeah.
Official to enforce.
Okay.
So what happened with that incident was appropriate, that they brought in the state guys to look at it.
I think what we were trying to talk about, you correct me if I'm wrong, let's say if Ronald's going down the road, and he goes into a business or into a building, and it deems that it's unsafe for some reason, can he contact the building official, and the building official make an inspection on that property? With, without, without any-
But are we talking about specifically for fire violation?
Well, any kind of violation.
Absolutely.
Okay, I guess that's what I was at, because-
The violation was reported.
Yeah, like, you know, in essence, you help me if I'm wrong, wasn't you all informed that actually because we don't have a fire marshal, that our building official acts as our fire code enforcement? Or state fire code enforcement?
Or state fire, that's not it.
So if it was a fire code, if somebody thought that was, you know, can, can our building official go in and say, this is a violation, it has to be corrected?
Yes.
Okay. That was a question that was brought up, and then the next question was, they, the fire chiefs that was involved that night out at the motel fire have asked if they could come before the board and present a little presentation of what was happening that night. Okay? And I do enjoy being on that board with those gentlemen, and you would pick up a lot of information. And I invited Rex the other night because I just felt like he needed to go, and I feel like any of you, that when those meetings are, you could attend. Back to some of the things you was talking about a while ago, Joe, just, in my opinion, they're unfunded state mandates. We're forced to do that with the CSA, and there's not a lot we can do about it. Unfortunately, that's, that's a sad situation. And I do reiterate what Joe said, and then what Rex said about the stickers. You know, it's not, it's not any more money to anyone, it's a little more time, but it's just a policing agent for delinquent taxes is what I, is what, is what the idea is. Not saying it's something that will be carried through, but it's something that we're discussing because of the issues that Bob just described, what we have with delinquent taxes. I do really appreciate Steve and Dr. Littrell going to legislative days, and I do appreciate the work that you're putting in trying to help salvage anything we can with this training center. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a thankless job, there's nothing else to say about it. Couple of other things that I've been kind of reading and watching with VACO and with the state legislation, and you need to, if you have the opportunity to send a message to our state legislators and speak your opinion on it, there is a bill now, and I think it's House Bill 966, that is going to affect power bills, power, what the, what the power companies can do and can't do as far as our, what they can charge us. And of course, Dominion Power and AEPCO both are really lobbying to, and what it amounts to is that if they make so much money, they don't have to give us anything back in return. And what the bill is to give them total control of what they can charge us for power bills. And I don't know, a lot of you may have known, noticed, a lot of people talking about how high their power bills was, and this past couple of months, I mean, some people had extraordinarily high power bills. And we have some, my understanding is we have some in the House, highest power rates in the state. So just keep that in mind, and it's something that's going within the next two weeks before the House, or to be voted on, and we need to speak our opinions about it. Talked about broadband, me and Steve's talked about that a lot, and talked about trying to get someone to hear from CenturyLink because of the service they provide our area. It's pitiful that we're in the situation that we're in with our broadband service, with our internet service providers in this area. I just recently switched from CenturyLink because of the service. It's just, and there's people paying for, for stuff that they can't get, and I don't agree with it at all. And I guess that's about all I have to say. I do thank everyone for being here tonight, and I want to wish our illustrious sheriff a happy birthday, I think we done done that some, but today's his birthday, and we would like to wish him a happy birthday, and thank him for the job that he does. It's a thankless job, and-
He's 32 years old, in case some of you-
You know, my, just, I won't take much time here, just quickly, my brother was a police officer. I have a nephew that's a police officer, and my son is a police officer. And it's like Rex said a while ago, you don't think about it, and you don't think about the danger that they face daily, because they never know what they're going to work up on. And their protection is above all the most important. I've often been, had people ask, would you help a police officer that was in distress? You dag on right out wood, in the drop of a hat, and I appreciate y'all for what you do. Does anyone have anything else? If not, I call for a motion for adjournment.
No, nope.
What?
We're gonna make Monday.
Oh, yeah, oh, wait, oh, hang on. We are going to go, we're gonna go into recess till Monday at 6 o'clock. That's all, we'll call this at recess.